Good evening, everyone. Today's January 23, 2019. The 27th meeting of the 23rd Council will come to order. All councilors are present this evening. Next, item two, we have a movement, a silence, and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor Borrego.
I would like to dedicate that moment of silence to the people who were in the shooting today in Florida. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome, everyone. Civic Plaza parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from council staff at the sign-up table. The council will take a break at approximately 7:00 PM this evening if needed. We want tonight's proceedings to be as civil and respectful as possible. Please do not make any personal attacks, and please no applause or other outbursts during the meeting. The meeting will go a lot smoother if we are all respectful of one another. Next item is item three, Proclamations and Presentations. We have Counselor Borrego.
Thank you, Madam President. Whereas the terms of the Treaty of Guadalupe Hidalgo signed February 1848 ended the Mexican-American War and ceded 525,000 square miles of Mexican territory, including New Mexico to the United States, and whereas even after its acquisition by the United States, New Mexico was rearranged and re-carved as admission to the Union was repeatedly denied, and whereas Hispanics and those with more local interests favored statehood, which offered the possibility of electing local officials, and whereas on June 20, 1910, President Taft signed the Enabling Act paving the way for admission of New Mexico into the United States, and whereas after New Mexico delegates drafted a plan for state government as a constitutional convention in Santa Fe, and the United States Congress approved the statehood legislation on January 6, 1912, President Taft announced New Mexico's admission to the United States, and whereas, as reported by the Daily New Mexican, when the news of New Mexico's admission into the Union as the 47th state reached Santa Fe, a large crowd assembled and cheered itself hoarse over the victory for which New Mexico had been fighting for three score years. Whereas New Mexico has been a state for 107 years, benefits from almost 365 days of magnificent blue skies, diverse desert, and mountain landscapes, and provides an array of opportunities for all ages and manifold cultures. Be it proclaimed that the council, the governing body of the city of Albuquerque, hereby recognizes the diligence, patience, and brave history that carried New Mexico to statehood, and proclaims the month of January, the month honoring New Mexico's U.S. statehood. And we have some folks from, I believe, from the museum to accept the proclamation. Would you please introduce yourselves?
Counselor Borrego and council members. My name is Andrew Connors. I'm the Director of the Albuquerque Museum, and I have with me Deb Slaney, who is the Curator of History for the museum, who has been at the museum for 18 years and presented numerous incredibly impressive exhibitions celebrating the history of Albuquerque and our place in United States history.
Yeah, thank you very much. We're very honored to be here from the museum to receive your proclamation. Thank you.
Next, we have Counselor Winter.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm really excited to give this next proclamation. It's a proclamation recognizing the Martin Luther King Jr. Track Meet that was held this weekend, so I'd like to invite down Leonard Waits and Clarence Smith with the MLK Commission, Joe Franklin and Jade Ellis with the University of New Mexico Track, Stephen Madrid and Director Simon with Parks and Rec, City of Albuquerque. So first, I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the New Mexico State Martin Luther King Jr. Commission was established by the legislature in 1991 to promote cultural awareness and human rights through Dr. King's life philosophy and six principles of nonviolent social action, whereas track and field meets have melded the individual's mind, body, and spirit through group competition and are events that help forge diverse groups into communities, and whereas this year was the third annual MLK Invitational Indoor Track Meet, a truly inter-agency effort to unite the community to honor Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and whereas the MLK Invitational Committee consists of members from the City of Albuquerque Parks and Recreation Department, the University of New Mexico Track and Field Program, the New Mexico Martin Luther King Commission, the Albuquerque NAACP, the Office of African American Affairs, Visit Albuquerque, and local community enthusiasts, and whereas it took 17 days to set up the track, crews from the University of New Mexico and the City of Albuquerque Parks and Recreation Department assisted in the transportation assembly of the indoor track, whereas the committee raised $30,000 through sponsorships, wherein the city council was a sponsor. Here, a $10,000 increase in sponsorships over past years, whereas the Martin Luther King Invitational Intercollegiate Meet was attended by 447 athletes from 18 universities, the University of New Mexico, New Mexico State, San Diego State, University of Southern California, University of California, Los Angeles, and the University of Ciudad Juarez, Mexico were among the participating teams, and whereas events such as the Martin Luther King Invitational Indoor Track Meet have a positive impact on our communities and helps to continue to spread the message of inclusivity, be it proclaimed that the council, the governing body of the city of Albuquerque, hereby acknowledges the efforts of the Martin Luther King Invitational Committee, including key members Leonard Waits, Coach Joe Franklin, and Steve Madrid, and Director Simon for their tireless work on a successful event, and I'm telling you, if you had an opportunity to go down this weekend, it was fabulous. It was one of the better MLK meets that I've seen. This was the third annual, and so it's really neat how all the different agencies that we have, the university, the partnerships, MLK Commission, City of Albuquerque, even the city council, as their sponsorship, working together, putting on in a great, great event for great ideas and for the community. So I'd like absolutely everybody who wants to speak, please speak.
Thank you, Councilman Winter, and thank you, other members. I don't know how to address you guys, I apologize for that. For the most part, you know, this was a project that was created as, I'm sorry, I'm Jade Ellis, Assistant Track Coach at the University of New Mexico, speaking on behalf of our head coach, Joe Franklin, he's a bit under the weather after such a successful weekend, out there yelling as much as he can, supporting the athletes. But this was really a project that was apparently written down and made together, put together on a napkin over lunch, and it's turned into something that we're really proud of. You know, when the university was approached with it, tying into our open meets and being a member of the community has been really important to us, and tying that in with Dr. King's visions and dreams has been really important in pushing forward and getting the community involved in both a healthy and active lifestyle and understanding what it means to be parts of the community and parts of the city. So we want to say thank you very much for your continued support of this program, and next year, as we continue to grow and are hosting some of our bigger meets, as the meet continues to grow, we look forward to doing it again. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, councilors. This was phenomenal. For this team to come together and do the things that we accomplished this year, it was great. We had a meeting today, and we found out we have to step our game up because it's getting so big, and it's a great venue for Albuquerque. So I want to thank you all for your support, thank everyone that contributed to this project, and thank this team right here. So, thank you.
Counselor winners, City Council, I'm Clarence Smith, recently retired from the State Trezor's Office. I was one of the ones that had lunch and thought about this idea, Padre's Barbecue, so we took it to Brad Winters, Counselor Winters, when he was Secretary of State at the time. We knew he pole vaulted, and he's still pole vaulting. We're trying to get him out there. And it's really amazing to see individuals come together for one cause, that this was Martin Luther King's dream, and he had a dream that one day everyone would work together, and that's what this is all about. And we had a meeting, a briefing today, and it was so amazing, one person said, you know, we have one little kid, seven, eight years old, that ran the 60-yard sprint. All he wanted to do is run up to the, they have at the end of the 60-yard sprint, it's a pad there, we have lane five, the fastest person, world record holder there. He just wanted to run up there and touch that. So thank you for all your support.
Madam President, Penya, Counselor Winter, counsel, thank you for this opportunity. This is our 14th anniversary, our season for the indoor track. I've been a part of every season, and I can't thank you guys enough for your sponsorship for the MLK meet. I thank you for that. It is truly a collaboration between a lot of departments, you know, from Leonard Waits, Jade Ellis, and Coach Franklin at UNM, to the guys that I work with, the guys that build the track. You know, those are the guys we have to thank. Those are the guys, blood, sweat, and tears, putting this track together. It's not an easy task, but we get it done every year. And, excuse me, I'm nervous. And thank you, Counselor Winter. I do appreciate the opportunity you've given me over the last 14 years. Because of you, I am where I'm at, and I do appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Please come up and get the proclamation.
With that, we have Counselor Borrego once again.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm very delighted to support this proclamation for APS Selfless Seniors, and I'd ask that you all come up, and I believe that there's also a representative from Albuquerque Public Schools with you. And Robert, I'd like for you to come up also. No? Robert is my neighbor, by the way, and he's the one who approached me about this, and his son is part of this art. He's involved with the Selfless Seniors. So with that, Madam Chair, and I think it's especially important to note that, you know, we see so much media attention on the negative, that we don't see as much on the positive, especially when it involves our youth, so that's why I'm especially honored to present this. Whereas each and every day, acts of generosity and selflessness are made by students throughout our city without recognition, and whereas residents throughout our city benefit from the acts of kindness of these citizens and will continue to benefit from their philanthropic works after their high school graduation, and whereas over 83,000 students currently enrolled in Albuquerque Public Schools benefit from the mentorship and support of their peers, and whereas the acts of selflessness made by high school seniors serve as an example to younger students and provide a call to all citizens to make our city a better place to live and learn, and whereas schools and organizations across the city serving those in need benefit tremendously from volunteer efforts of our youth and help those that are disadvantaged to find comfort, friendship, and valuable resources to achieve a brighter tomorrow, and whereas the recognition of selflessness promotes selflessness in others. Be it proclaimed that the council, the governing body of the city of Albuquerque, hereby recognizes January as Selfless Seniors Month in recognition of the selfless acts of Diana Muelon, Albuquerque High School, Stephen Colmanero, Attrisco Heritage Academy High School, Joseph Dusset, Sibula High School, Austin Brown, Down Nordy High School, Evangelina Morales Norris, Eldorado High School, Emma Kostanowski, Highland High School, Daisy May, LaCueva High School, Daisy Me, I'm sorry, Danny Long, is that right, Long? Manzano High School, Amy Hernandez, Rio Grande High School, Trazon Jimerson Sandia High School, Sienna Muscariñas Valley High School, Veneka Hosky, Volcano Vista High School, Jasmine Alcala, West Mesa High School, Nicholas Miller, Next Gen Academy, representing the philanthropic spirit of the Albuquerque Public School's student body youth and encouraging every citizen to give back to their community. And I hope that I said your names properly. And would you like to speak, ma'am? Introduce yourself, please.
Thank you, Councilwoman Borrego, members of the council city and citizens. I'm Shannon Barnhill. I'm the Executive Director of the APS Education Foundation, and I am proud to be here with seven of our 14 Selfless Seniors this evening. On behalf of the APS Education Foundation and our 2019 Selfless Seniors, I want to sincerely thank you for recognizing the service of these incredible soon-to-be graduates. 11 years ago, Frank Frost Photography set out to show our community that our APS students were contributing a tremendous amount of good work, and we didn't even know they were doing it. As Frank would say, he was not looking to honor those spotlighted in their schools, such as the starting quarterback of the football team or the Val Victorian. Instead, he wanted the opportunity to highlight the students who were selflessly giving back to their community and peers without expectation of praise. And again, that is the meaning of selflessness. Some of their acts of service include, and these are things that they have orchestrated on their own, planned, implemented themselves, and this is including feeding the homeless, mentoring their peers, reading to underprivileged children, visiting and providing counseling to senior citizens, supporting veterans, and so much more. And each one of their bios is on our website, the APS website, and I highly encourage you to read about each one of their incredible, incredible stories. We tell each class of our Selfless Seniors, which is our 11th year, that we represent their respective high schools in their philanthropic spirit of all students that grace the walls of their schools. We tell them that they also represent the APS School District and its entire student body, and inspire acts of service in their underclassmen, middle, and elementary school students. Now we can tell them, because of this proclamation, that they also represent the generous spirit of the city of Albuquerque, and remind all of us that we make time to give to those in need, champion an important cause, or give voice to the voiceless, and in that spirit, we can make our city a better place. I want to thank these wonderful individuals, our Selfless Seniors 2019.
Would any of you care to say anything?
That's selflessness in action.
If not, we will come forward to receive your proclamation.
Thank you so much. I have one for you. I have one for all of you. There you go. Thank you. I have one for all of you. Thank you. Thank you for working. It's so nice to see you. Let me get to yours. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. This is the original, and that's for APS, and these are for the additional students.
Thank you. Next up is Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to welcome Tonya Rivera, who is with us this evening, and the first time I had met Tonya, I was inspired by the work that she is doing for the disabled in our community. She's been really impressive, and she's hardworking, and she's done so much in this community just to help the young kids and our disabled kids, and we'd like to, myself and the council president, would like to read this proclamation in your honor, Tonya, and it reads, whereas Tonya Rivera was born on March 25 of 1980, and due to complications during her birth, she was diagnosed with cerebral palsy and was not expected to live a long life, or if she did, Tonya would live her life in a vegetative state. And whereas Tonya has never been able to walk or talk, but has proven that she is full of life as she graduated from Valley High School, and as an adult takes on leadership roles in working with young people with disabilities, such as teaching them how to dance and finding ways for them to be active in our community, and whereas Tonya loves the outdoors and had a very playful childhood with her family, as her parents always made sure Tonya felt included and did not feel any different than her little sister, and whereas Tonya's idea of creating playgrounds for all children to play in was inspired from a TV spot about universally accessible treehouse in Torrance, California, leaving Tonya to believe that we could do the same type of projects here in the city of Albuquerque. And whereas Tonya, with the help of Marcus Sanchez of VSA, Arts of New Mexico, and other partners, created the Every Ability Place Project, which envisions playgrounds with specialty equipment that can provide a place for individuals and young children with disability and with mobility issues and disability that might pose obstacles in using everyday playground equipment. And Counselor President Penya.
And whereas it has been just over four years since Tonya Rivera founded Every Ability Place Project. When they installed the first special swing at Westgate Community Park, she continues her work, and the most recent project is for an adaptive swing at Sean McQuethy Park, and whereas Tonya believes every child deserves a playful life and is working tirelessly by attending seminars nationwide and working with others to learn how to expand her idea and to make her dream of parks for all to use come true. Be it proclaimed that the council, the governing body of the city of Albuquerque, hereby recognizes Tonya Rivera for all of her efforts and work to give the youth of Albuquerque with disabilities a special place to play.
Go ahead, Tonya.
Thank you very much. I enjoy helping families. I look forward to continuing my work.
I think you're all done, Tonya. Thank you very much. I'm going to go down and take you the proclamation.
Thank you, Tonya. Appreciate you being here and all the work you do. Next, we have Counselor, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize Counselor Davis is out there. Next, we have Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a special proc also to read tonight. This is, well, first of all, I guess I need to, I'm sorry, I need to ask Shadra Patel to come down, and there you are. Shadra is representing the New Mexico Asian Family Center, and she is here in this, tonight, to represent also the collaboration, a collaborative effort that grew out of the Department of Health's Healthy Equity Working Group some, about 12 years ago, and their focus is on eliminating racism in New Mexico. So I'm going to go ahead and read this, and actually, I'm sorry, it's about, the collaborative is called the Deconstructing Racism in New Mexico, and it's a project driven by a coalition of individuals and organizations, including the Domestic Violence Resource Center, the New Mexico Asian Family Center, together with Brothers, and the UNM Community Engagement Center. Together, these individuals and organizations are working toward a New Mexico that is racism-free. So thank you for being here, and I'll read your proclamation now. Whereas Albuquerque has a rich and diverse population, representing unique racial and ethnic groups, and whereas Albuquerque has a long history of relations between diverse communities that are sometimes beautiful, sometimes disempowering, and always complex. Whereas Albuquerque is most successful when every New Mexican has equitable access to the conditions that support people's well-being, and whereas eliminating complex inequalities and all barriers to equity, including those based on race and color, gender, class, ethnicity, cultural background, sexual orientation, disability, nationality, language, and their intersections, continues to be a goal for the city of Albuquerque. And whereas every single person has the capability to make a simple change within him or herself that can have a profound effect on an entire society, we also have a shared responsibility to engage people from all walks of life in genuine efforts to increase understanding, communication, caring, and respect for one another. And whereas communities across the nation join together on January 22 in recognition of the National Day of Racial Healing to reinforce and honor our common humanity while celebrating the distinct differences that make our communities vibrant, and whereas the city of Albuquerque affirms its commitment to the principles of equity and empowerment as well as creating structures of opportunity for every New Mexican. Be it proclaimed that the council, the governing body of the city of Albuquerque, hereby proclaims January 22 as Anti-Racism Day. I know you're getting this one day late, but that's just the way the calendar fell this time, but you know what? That's okay, because we're extending that date for a little bit longer. So thank you for being here. Would you like to talk a little bit about the collaborative or your initiative?
Thank you so much, and thank you, members of the council, for supporting this proclamation.
Thank you so much. And thank you, members of the council, for supporting this proclamation. Thank you for that. Thank you, members of the council, for supporting this proclamation. And thank you for the introduction. I stated earlier, my name is Shraddha Patel, and I'm representing Deconstructing Racism New Mexico as part of the New Mexico Asian Family Center. It is imperative that we recognize and actively deconstruct and work towards anti-racism at all levels of our society. The timing for this proclamation is perfect, with new leadership, community organizing efforts, and youth ready to learn, unlearn, and lead our community. We had the first Anti-Racism Youth Leadership Institute last summer, and we plan to continue developing young folks' skills to actively be anti-racist and deconstruct racism. Connecting our current system's barriers for people of color to the history of racial injustice needs to happen through intentional conversations and actions at both government and systems levels. Thank you for your time, and I urge everyone to please go to deconstructingracismnewmexico.org and sign our pledge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the work that you do, and thank you for coming to me about this. I'm honored to be giving this proclamation. Would you like to come up?
Once again, Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to bring forward, who is going to provide a presentation, Brian Ellerid from Convoy of Hope regarding the Love ABQ Program. Welcome, Brian.
City Counselor Sanchez, city councilors, it's an honor to be with you tonight. So, last summer, about 100 businesses here in town, the city of Albuquerque, APD, and APS, and nonprofits and churches came together. We presented Convoy Hope at the Albuquerque Convention Center on June 23rd. We gave away $1 million worth of goods and services to the city of Albuquerque. And Chick-fil-A and APS Food and Nutrition, we served 9,900 meals. We gave away 3,000 pairs of shoes, 80,000 pounds of groceries, 280 haircuts, 465 family portraits, National Breast Cancer Foundation was there to help us serve people. It was such a big success. Mayor Keller was there, City Counselor Sanchez was there. And Mayor Keller said, "Let's make this an annual event." And so, let's do this every year at the Convention Center. And what do you need from me, Brian? I said, "Would you sponsor the rent, the $38,000 rent?" And he said, "Absolutely." And so, the city's our partner. He said, "What are you doing next?" I said, "We're doing Thanksgiving." So, APS defines homelessness as 4,000 kids in our community that don't have a permanent nighttime or adequate residence. And so, we came together to provide a Thanksgiving meal for 2,000 families. So, APS purchased the food, cooked the food, delivered the food to 64 different schools, and we were able to feed 2,000 families. So, that's gonna become an annual event as well. So, the city started to come together, APD, APS, Chick-fil-A, Presbyterian Hospital, a lot of partnerships have come together. And so, what we're gonna do this summer is called Love ABQ. So, the idea is that June 14th through the 22nd of Albuquerque, it'll be a whole week, a love week of loving and serving Albuquerque like it's never been served before. So, we'll kick it off Friday night, the 14th, with a volunteer rally. And for Convoy Hope, we had 1,600 volunteers for this week. Our goal is to mobilize 2,000 volunteers that would donate two to four hours of community service that week. If we could do that, we could have 4,000 to 8,000 hours of community service to the city of Albuquerque to do city projects. So, we're asking City Council and Mayor Keller's office, you define the projects, we'll provide the manpower. So, which walls have graffiti that need to be painted? Which schools need to be remodeled? Which city parks need the most support and cleanup? And we'll mobilize 2,000 people to come serve the city of Albuquerque. And that'll be over $100,000, $200,000 worth of wages that we could provide in manpower through volunteering through the city. And so, I want to invite you as City Council members to participate individually, but also City Council, if we could partner with you, we'd love to do that, to really love and serve the city. This is interfaith, so there's no religious affiliation required, no ID required. Just come, serve, be involved, and be served. We want to love and serve the community of Albuquerque. Moving into November, November 2nd will be our second annual Convoy of Hope at the Albuquerque Convention Center. And we'll, again, give away $1 million worth of goods and services to the community. We'd love for you to be there in participation with us, to come serve. And one of my favorite memories was, we would take the shoes off the kids, and then take their socks off and wash their feet, and then dry their feet, put a fresh pair of socks on and a new pair of shoes. Then they'd go get their haircut, their family portrait, and get lunch, go on the rock climbing wall, and then walk out with two bags of groceries per adult. And one of my favorite memories was a Christian family serving a refugee family here, a Muslim family. And I thought, that's what's right about this world, when a Christian and Muslims can serve together and serve each other. And I believe that Albuquerque has a great future, and we'd love to partner with you. Thank you for your time. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. We'd love for you to partner with Love ABQ, Convoy Hope, and the Thanksgiving outreach at APS. Thank you.
Brian, thank you very much for your time and great work.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Next, we have a presentation from Mr. Edward Hardness, the Executive Director of the Civilian Police Oversight Agency regarding the CPOA's report for fourth quarter 2018.
Good evening, excuse me. Good evening, Madam President, Honorable Counsel. I prepared for you a couple of handouts, which I believe you should have in front of you. For the months of October through December of 2018, the Police Oversight Board and the CPOA administratively closed 32 cases. There were three cases with sustained violations, which was a recommended, which contained two written reprimands and one suspension as a recommendation. We had one not sustained finding, one exonerated, and one unfounded. As it relates to the Independent Monitor's Report Number Eight, IMR-8, which was produced to the public on the 2nd of November, of the paragraphs that pertain directly to the CPOA, 19 of the 22 paragraphs, we are in operational compliance. As a subset of that, I wanted to expand a little bit on administratively closed cases. As we've been meeting with the Monitor over the periods of IMR-6 and 5 before that, and then the too many reports, which constituted seven, we were in negotiations with the Monitor to expand the definition of an administratively closed case to increase the efficiencies within the agency. When you look at an agency-by-agency comparison, Internal Affairs opened 60 cases for the entire year of 2018, where the CPOA opened 275 cases during that same time period. Internal Affairs has six investigators. The CPOA has four investigators. So, it's incumbent upon us to increase our efficiencies. So, what we established was a minimally substantiate, minimally substantiate the allegations in the complaint. So, when we get a complaint, we do a preliminary investigation by viewing the video, because we have access to the video. We review the police reports, if there are any available. We review the computer-aided dispatch reports. And if we cannot minimally substantiate the allegations in the complaint, then we will administratively close the complaint without targeting an officer and going through the exercise of having something become unfounded when we know on the face of it, those allegations simply just did not occur. For the year of 2017, we administratively closed about 29% of our cases. For the first quarter of 2018, I can report to you that we're administratively closing 79% of our cases. So, we've increased our efficiencies quite a lot. The importance of IMR-8 is that this is the first time that the Monitor was able to evaluate the administratively closed standard for minimal substantiation. And they've agreed with the work that we're doing, and they've agreed to that standard and to allow us to continue to use that standard to administratively close cases. As far as the policy work by the POB, there is a second attached page, which describes the policies that have gone through the Office of Policy Analysis and the Office for the Policies, Procedures, and Review Board. All of those policies were reviewed in some aspect by either the member of the committee, Dr. Cass, or by the entire Oversight Board, including the Subcommittee. There was a special meeting in November regarding the ordinance rewrite. And as far as outreach, there's been attendance at numerous community policing councils across the city. We've done a presentation to the Public Defender's Office for Metro Court, two presentations to APD's two new lateral classes, one presentation to the 120th APD Cadet Academy Class, and one presentation to the Community Policing Council's Quarterly Summit convened by Mayor Keller. On a personal note, I would just like to say, a little over three years ago, this body and the community welcomed me. I want to thank, I want to take a moment to say thank you to you and to the community for embracing myself and the work that we're doing. I'm happy to be living and working here in this undiscovered gem that we call Albuquerque. Stand for questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Harness, Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Madam President. And Mr. Harness, thanks so much for doing this. It's been a while, and it's great to see this in a more public forum, so folks can see it. I just wanted to follow up really quickly under your casework. You noted three sustained violations, two written reprimand recommendations, and one suspension recommendation. At one point in years past, we were having problems with APD concurrence and communicating that back to the board. Can you give us an update on APD's concurrent status on those three sustained violations?
Madam President, Counselor Davis, yes. In these instances, the department concurred with those findings. Our concurrence rate is near 90%. I believe in our next quarterly report that we'll make to you in March, there will be a couple of non-concurrences that we will have for the first quarter of 2019.
That's great. And as frustrating as it is to see us go through these processes and to find places where officers didn't do the right thing, sometimes, it happens, and we want to get that corrected. But it's a big step forward that the administration and the police department is working, the police administration's working with POB to resolve those problems, and I appreciate that.
Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Harness, thank you for this report. This is great. Thank you for your work on it. The question I have, you mentioned that there was a special meeting that was called in November. Did I hear you correctly, last November?
Yes, Madam President, Counselor Gibson, the Police Oversight Board held a special meeting to go through the ordinance rewrite, so that they could absorb it as a body. And then, at the subsequent meeting, that's when they made their recommendations, which were forwarded to the council and are before the Finance and Government Subcommittee at this point.
Great. So, is that a common occurrence for the board to schedule special meetings? Or is it, would you, can you give me an idea of like how many you might have had in the past 12 months?
Madam President, Counselor Gibson, I believe we've had two special meetings in calendar year 2018.
Oh, okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Borrego.
Thank you, Mr. Harness. Thank you for your work, and thank you for this report. A little bit overdue, but thank you. I appreciate that. On your second page, you have, I guess, presentations and the presenter, and then you have the action posted. What, could you just, what does that mean exactly? You posted the, what did you post? I don't understand that.
President, Counsel President, Vice President Borrego. Yes, and as Dr. Cass has this broken out from the Policy Subcommittee, the action posted from Office of Policy Analysis means that the policy goes from the Office of Policy Analysis to be posted on the Power DMS system within APD, which gives all APD personnel seven days to comment on that particular policy before that policy then goes to the Policy and Procedures Review Board. And all of those comments that come from APD through Power DMS are then incorporated with that policy, as it's then considered at the Policy Procedure Review Board.
Okay. Thank you. And I would just mention, I did watch the, I guess it was the November meeting, which is on the GOV channel, so that, you know, for the public, that's helpful to understand some of these changes that are occurring. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have a question for you, Mr. Harness, but I do have a question for our staff, Ms. Yara. How far along are we in sending the three names to the council to fill that board?
Yes, Madam President, Counselor Sanchez. So, Mr. Melendris and Mr. Moya and I are evaluating 12 applications that hadn't been vetted. And we're going to meet, actually, tomorrow to discuss those. And then, we will supply the top, probably between five and eight names to the CPOA and the POB, so they can begin initiating those people into their process. And hopefully, we will be able to appoint three of those for the vacancies very soon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harness, and for our staff, as well as your evaluating them. You know, if we can just look to have more diversity on this board, I think it's important as we move forward. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Harness. Next item is Item Four, Economic Development Discussion. There is none. Item Five, Administration Question and Answer Period. Counselor, are there any questions for the administration? No? So, we will move on to Item Six, the Journal. Counselor Borrego.
Thank you, Madam President. I move approval of the January 7th Journal.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second for the approval of the January 7th Journal. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Next item is Seven, Communications and Introductions. Are there any changes to the letter of introduction? I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing EC 315 on tonight's agenda for final action. EC 315 is mayor's recommendation of award to Maudrell's barreling role. Harris insists to provide bond council services. There's a motion, a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. I move the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing EC 316 on tonight's agenda for final action. EC 316 is the mayor's recommendation of award to Oric, Harrington, and Sutcliffe to provide tax council services. There's a motion, a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing EC 317 on tonight's agenda for final action. EC 317 is the mayor's recommendation of award for two Sherman Howard to provide disclosure council services. There's a motion, a second for approval. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Next, Counselor Borrego.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing R 123 on tonight's agenda for final action. R 123 is urging the New Mexico State Legislature to provide funding for all schools that wish to implement a community schools framework model, and encouraging a position for a community school coordinator be created, and urging the New Mexico State Legislature to adopt proposed amendments to the New Mexico Community Schools Act during the 2019 legislative session.
There's a motion, a second for approval. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes. Counselor Borrego.
Madam President, I move approval of the letter of introduction.
There's a motion, a second for approval of the letter of introduction. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Next item is Eight, Reports Committee. Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance and Government Operations Committee met on Monday, January 14th, 2019, and reports out the following items. In the matter of EC 293, 307, 310, and 311, that they be approved. In the matter of EC 308 and 309, that receipt be noted. In the matter of O 45 and R 116, that they do pass. In the matter of R 118, that it do pass as amended and be acted on at the meeting at which it is reported. I move to accept the committee reports.
There's a motion, a second to accept the SDO committee report. All those in favor say yes?
Say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Counselor Bettin.
Thank you, Madam President. The Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee met on Wednesday, January 16th.
The Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee met on Wednesday, January 16th, and reports out the following items. In the matter of, in the matter of O 44, that it do pass as substituted. In the matter of EC 301, that it be confirmed and acted upon at the meeting at which it is reported. I move to accept the committee report.
There's a motion, a second, to move, accept the committee report. All those in favor say yes. Opposed, no. Motion passes. Next item is Item, doesn't have an item number, but it's deferrals and withdraws. Counselors, are there any deferrals or withdrawals at this time? Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. I move a deferral on Item R 78, which is a nuisance in substandard building or structure in need of abatement at 115 Charleston Southeast. Move a deferral because we have a new owner who's been doing some work there, and we've agreed to give him 60 days to show some more progress for the city.
There's a motion, a second, for deferral until March 18th. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Next is Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. I move deferral of floor substitute R-83 until the February 20th meeting.
There's a motion, a second, for deferral until February 20th. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Next item is Item Nine, The Consent Agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda? For those, no. So, for those individuals on tonight's consent agenda who are being appointed to serve on a border commission, please stand if you are in the audience, and thank you for your willingness to serve. Thank you. So, before we vote, we actually have someone signed up for public comment, and that's Ms. Sue Flint.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this. This is the reappointment of Dan Serrano, which is the OC 1921, and I would ask that the council actually defer this. I have filed a conflict of interest complaint, which is a formal complaint with the city attorney and the risk management, on his conflict of interest that I believe he has. And I won't speak any further on that, because I did give it to them, and I will file an appeal whether he is, if he is reappointed. I believe that Mr. Serrano has conflict of interest, that he does not excuse himself. I listed this to the city planning director, who said I didn't make a case, but as I looked under the state statutes, I did make a case. So, I would ask you to defer this until the city takes action, or answers whether or not they are going to take action against Mr. Serrano. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flint. Counselor Borrego.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, for approval of the consent agenda. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Next item is Item 10, General Public Comments. There will be a two-minute time limit. The light will, on the podium, will be green for the first minute and a half, and then the light will turn yellow, and the bell will ring, indicating you have 30 seconds remaining to wrap up your comments. At, at two minutes, the lights, the light will turn red to indicate that your time is up. Our first speaker this evening is Mr. Mike Alvarez, followed by Don Schrader, followed by Carl Holm. If you can make your way to the front and have a seat there while the first speaker comes up. Mr. Alvarez.
What I'd like to speak about today is about the wall in Mexico. I do believe that it's unnecessary to build another wall. Every time a president gets the seat of president, they want to build a wall. The only way you can keep people where they live is to give them something they can be proud of. More work, more opportunities to support their families, not have somebody to blackmail us and keep us in stress capabilities by taking our children away. This is unnecessary, blackmailing us, taking away our social security, our benefits, and taking our food stamps. We paid for all those benefits. Nobody can take away the benefits that we paid for, but for some reason, this gentleman is doing everything he can to get money for his wall. They ought to put him behind two walls and see how he likes it. Because this wall that he trying, trying to build is not going to keep people in Mexico. It's not going to keep people breaking the law. The things that bugs me the most, the ones that are breaking the wa, the breaking the law more than anybody in this world, are the people that live here, the people that are Americans. I worked at the state penitentiary. We have people more in the pen that are American citizens than what we have in other countries. So, please, please stop this gentleman from black, from blackmailing us and keeping us as prisoners. Something has to give. Something has to give, big time. We worked very hard in our lifestyle to keep the benefits that we have. I wish everybody would open their eyes and do something about it.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez, and thank you for your service, Mr. John, Don Schrader.
Prophet Martin Luther King Jr. damned the Vietnam War in his most controversial speech on April 4th, 1967, exactly one year before he was assassinated. King damned the U.S. mass murder of Vietnamese people. King said, quote, "The greatest purveyor of violence in the world today is my own government," unquote. The New York Times, the Washington Post, many newspapers nationwide condemned his strong message of truth. Many whites, many blacks, the White House, even most of King's inner circle of black leaders condemned his strong message of truth. He suffered much hatred, many death threats. Why is that speech far less known, far less honored than his "I Have a Dream" speech? Sadly, most King's celebrations today castrate his message. Sadly, most King's celebrations do not emphasize his strong stand against nuclear weapons, against the Vietnam War, against the evils of capitalism and the U.S. empire. Martin Luther King Jr. was a prophet, not a politician, not a rock star. He refused to silence his conscience. He refused to sell out his convictions to get the popular support of millions. He refused to sell out his convictions to get the approval of the powerful.
Thank you. Carl Holm, followed by Tad Nemenski.
Good evening, Chair Pena and fellow counselors. My name is Carl Holm, and I'm the general manager of the DoubleTree Hotel downtown, right across from you all. And I'm representing the Greater Albuquerque Innkeepers Association. My purpose is to share good news with you today. From our membership, we intend to share information from time to time with the city council. The Greater Albuquerque Innkeepers Association has approximately about 120 members, made up of businesses associated with the lodging community, along with members that support the tourism and hospitality industry. Our organization is the voice of hospitality industry in central New Mexico. Tonight, I'm happy to share with you some great statistics with you. Our hotel occupancy for the calendar year through November of last, last year is up about 3.4 percent, and it's at 66, overall occupancy for the city was 66 percent, compared to 63.8 percent, same time last year. Hotel rates are also up, and they've increased by 2.6 percent this year, resulting in an average rate of about $84.93. So, that's across the entire Greater Albuquerque metro. Larger tax collections for the fiscal year, starting in July, are up 9.5 percent. In 200, I'm sorry, in 2018, it is estimated, the revenue that it's going to generate will be about 12 and a half million dollars in larger's tax collections. This is all positive. It contributes to the Albuquerque economy in a significant way. Tourism is the city's largest private industry, and employs 40,000 people in Albuquerque, and basically creates estimated, we have an estimated 6.2 million visitors that come from outside, and generates about $2 billion in the industry here. Thank you very much.
You can finish your thought.
Oh, I just wanted to say that the association, in addition, also contributes $5,000 total in scholarship memberships to CNM and, and MSU hospitality students. And thankfully, for the incentive fund that we have, that you've support, American Booksellers are in town right now. Last week, we had the Seventh Day Adventists, and between those two groups in the city generated $2.3 million in additional direct spending to the city. So, we appreciate everything that you do. We thank you for your support, and we look forward to another positive report down the road. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's important for our economy. Counselor Borrego.
I keep hoping for a hotel in District 5.
Pardon?
I said, I keep hoping for a hotel being built in District 5.
Well, maybe down the road it will be, especially if we increase our rates and increase our occupancy with the good news here. That supports building another hotel, and we're looking for full-service hotels, more than anything else, because they really attract more associates, employees, and can generate larger revenue for the city in general.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Tad Nemenski, followed by Sue Flint, followed by Simon Polakowski.
Thank you. My name is Tad Nemenski. Now, it's so many, so many issues now, but I can't, don't have time. Need two minutes. Let me start from walls. Do we need a wall in the southern United States? Well, how about, do we, do we have, do we need a wall around the old houses in Albuquerque? Yes, we need it. Do we need a wall right here? That wasn't the wall right here, couple of years back. Now, executive director, oversight at Harness, soon he took office, he clacked the door. And then, I noticed, two weeks ago, that was no window. You have to just call him. Now, he put bulletproof window from his office out. It is problem. You just look at it, got to be some problem, if executive director doing something like that. Now, exactly, he's not doing his job. Now, look at right here, at City Hall, many offices, environmental health is locked up. So, I can go on and on. Where are we? Why that's happen? Because our problem right here with government. Now, speaking about wall, yes, let, I said once before, and let me tell you, president should build the wall, hire Mexican national, start from Mexican side, and after they finish, let them stay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sue Flint, followed by Simon Polakowski.
Thank you again. Tonight, I wanted to mention for Councilwoman Borrego, when you spoke about that median that's in the middle of nowhere out there on your district, you were on television, you wanted to get it taken out. There was a median that was on Randolph or University South, and it was just there, and it was at the top of a hill, and you either merged or you missed it. And one morning, I was on my way to work in the general aviation area, and the man missed it and hit me head-on at over 100 miles an hour. I didn't walk for almost six years without some aid, and it literally was not there for any other reason, just there. So, I would have that one that you were talking about seriously removed before something happened. I testified in lawsuits against the city and that median when trucks actually hit and killed people. I was lucky that I wasn't killed. And then, to move forward, you know, one of my big things is redevelopment plans, and I am so thoroughly disappointed in the, in the city and their process in these redevelopment plans, how they decide what is a blighted area. I spent Monday, all day Monday, eight and a half hours driving from the north to the south, from the west to the east. I went to every project that Kurt Browning and them had. I looked at every piece of property that Moestis or Kohler or CRBE had, and all of those are blighted. They've, they're in control of these, and they blighted these areas, and as you're going to hear tonight, they're going to ask you for money in a blighted area that, once again, they created. They're in partnership with Presbyterian, who's the city's healthcare provider, that is going to raise its prices to the city. They were not a partner until you gave them the funds through wall to build that hospital. I will fight these people. I keep telling you, you know, legislation is very important to be passed without any errors. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Mr. Simon Polakowski.
Council President, counsel. Martin Luther King Jr. was murdered by James Earl Ray Jr. Ray means king. Martin Luther rejected the epistles of James. Dr. King was murdered in Memphis, the ancient capital of Egypt, the place of the god of death. James Earl Ray grew up in Cairo, the modern-day capital of Egypt. He was murdered at the Lorraine Motel. The kings of Lorraine had papal bull. They could veto who could be pope. This was decided by the Treaty of Verdun, where one of the greatest human sacrifices took place during the First World War. Almost a million men died senselessly on its fields. He died in front of room 306, the three sixes. Dr. King's final speech was made the night before in a Christian church, the church that had once been a Masonic temple. The condemned is always given a final request. James Earl Ray was captured in London, England, the seat of the Court of St. James. Dr. King was murdered one year to the day after speaking about, against the Vietnam War at the Riverside Baptist Church. Doctor, on Dr. King's birthday, on my show, I used to play that speech in its entirety. Dr. King was called the most dangerous man in America by FBI, then FBI Director J. Edgar Hoover. He was called an agent of Russia. Do we know any agents of Russia running around now? He was vilified in the liberal media, condemned, as Don Schrader said. Do we know anybody that's been condemned in the liberal press? People, wake up. We need a public access channel where people can speak the truth to each other, because power does not listen to us. That is what I've come here for. We need a place where people have more than two minutes and can present what they know to people who really care. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our final speaker. We are now on Item 11, Announcements. Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. There will be a Finance and Government Operations Committee meeting on Monday, January 28th, at 5:00 p.m. in the Vincent E. Grealio Chambers.
Counselor Bettin.
Thank you. There will be an intergovernmental Legislative Relations Committee meeting on Saturday, February 2nd, at 9:00 a.m. in the Council Committee Room on the ninth floor.
There will be an Albuquerque-Bernaleo County Government Commission meeting on Thursday, January 24th, at 5:00 p.m. in the Vincent E. Grealio Chambers. There will also be a Mesa del Soltid Board Meeting on Monday, January 28th, at 10:30 in the Council Committee Room. Next item is 12, Public Hearings. We have none, so we'll move on to Item 13, Approvals. OC 20, Selection of the Inspector General. The Accountability and Government Oversight interviewed candidates and submitted the following three names in the ranked order. Just to make note-
Just to make note that Mr. Ko has withdrawn his name. So we have Vicky Duran and Kenneth Bramlett. So we have two people signed up to speak. We have, first speaker is Mr. Tad Nemenski, followed by Michelle Benton.
Thank you. My name is Tad Nemenski. I remember last time when David Harper was appointed, chose and appointed. Well, there was many problems. I was only one who spoke. Then I noticed he had so many problems, founding, et cetera, et cetera. Yes, there were other problems, organizational. Now, we're looking for two candidates. Well, Vicky Duran. No, I'm sorry. Let me start from Kenneth, and I'll come back to Vicky Duran. Vicky Duran, she was, of course, FPD, distinguished cop, et cetera, et cetera. Well, working for that or New General Office. I read her resume, all three of them. So now, and I look at who pushing this, she was running before. Now Edmund Preah pushing Duran. Well, something's going on. And her resume also shows that she worked for Casino, Albuquerque Down, Race Truck. Well, I know about Race Truck and Casino, how corrupted, and that is private. Now, let's go to, so that does not impress me. Kenneth, he impressed me. And what we need right here, we need somebody from out of state who has got organizational skill and guts and financing. You need enough money to hire own people, even bring them from out of state. We need an independent. And that's all. I don't have time.
Good evening, Madam President and Council members. I audited hospitals in New Mexico and Texas to assure they received correct reimbursement from Medicare and Medicaid. Our audits resulted in settlements of millions of dollars either recovered by the federal or state governments in favor of the hospitals, or in favor of the hospitals. Our job was to be impartial, but during my career, I noticed different leadership styles. Some felt it was their duty to recoup money for the government, and others felt it was important to be impartial. I noted the audit team's attitude made a difference. People tended to be more helpful when an auditor was doing their job without bias. All candidates for this job are qualified and would probably do a good job if selected, but Mr. Kenneth Bramlett stood out to me because of his friendly nature. He was personable when he spoke to the council. I noticed many of you smiled as he spoke and were receptive to what he had to say. He was also friendly to people in the audience after he addressed the council. He took time to listen and speak to people out in the hallway. He also stayed for the entire meeting. I spoke with him after the meeting, and Counselor Winter also came to talk with us after the meeting. At that point, Mr. Bramlett suggested that even if he was not selected for the position, he would gladly be available for support and advice. In my experience, when there were audit findings, it was due to an honest mistake, not fraud. A large part of the job is to help people learn from their mistakes. Personality is important, and a person who is friendly and a good listener will get more information than a person who is confrontational or adversarial. In my opinion, Mr. Bramlett has demonstrated the personality to be successful in this job. I also believe it would be beneficial to have a person in this position with a fresh perspective from outside New Mexico. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Council Borrego.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just have a general comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. It's not for you, though.
Oh, sure. Thank you.
I just wanted to, for transparency's sake, just say that I did speak with both candidates on the phone, and I did ask them the same questions. And, I mean, they both have really very great credentials. I did ask them each to send me a hundred words or less of why they wanted this position. Both were very impressive. So just for transparency's sake, I just wanted the public to know that I had about a fifteen, twenty-minute conversation with each one, and I think that we have two really good candidates. Thank you.
Thank you. So the council rules provide a procedure for appointments made by the council, and we are following that procedure this evening. The ballots have been distributed by the staff, and it lists the candidates in the ranked order as submitted by the AGO committee. Counselors are to indicate the order of preference with a one for your first preference and a two for your second preference. After counselors complete their ballot, staff will collect the ballots and tally the results. So I will move to Table OC 20 while the staff tallies the results.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to Table OC 20. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. We are now on EC 315. EC 315 is the mayor's recommendation of award to Madras, Berling, Roll, Harris and Sisk to provide bond council services. I move approval. Is there anyone signed up to speak? Questions from the administration? Questions from counselors? Hearing none. I urge your support. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Next item is EC 316, mayor's recommendation of award to Orick, Harrington and Sutcliffe to provide tax council services. I move approval.
Second.
Anyone signed up to speak? Questions from the administration? There's a motion and a second for approval of EC 316. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Next item is EC 317, mayor's recommendation of award to Sherman Howard to provide disclosure council services. I move approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval. Is there anyone signed up to speak? Questions from the administration? There's a motion and a second for approval of EC 317. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. We are now, oh, are you ready? Because my script says, see, I was quick. Anyway, so now we are on Item 14, Final Actions. Council Borrego, Benton, Sanchez and Peña. This is R. 117.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, I mean, Madam President. I keep wanting to call you Madam Chair because I'm on other boards. So, this is creating a, basically a policy for a complete count for 2020 census, establishing a Census 2020 Complete Count Committee to promote a 2020 census awareness campaign with the goal of ensuring that every resident in Albuquerque is counted, providing instructions for an action plan, making an appropriation. And I have the honor of presenting this along with Counselor Benton, Counselor Peña and Counselor Sanchez. And basically, the bill goes into sort of the logistics of how we would proceed in doing a complete count committee, how we would establish the committee, and trying to ensure that every resident in the county is counted. And I believe that Counselor Benton has a committee substitute?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
We need to move the...
Yeah, I'll...
Okay.
Okay, so I move the bill.
Okay, and I second it. And, Madam Chair, if I may, I'll move the floor substitute for R. 117, which is in your iPads.
And I will second that.
There's a motion and a second for floor substitute of R. 117. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. We're back on the bill.
Madam Chair, or Madam President, excuse me.
Counselor Benton.
Give me some bad habits there. Madam President, I move to suspend the rules for the purpose of allowing this resolution to be adopted on the same evening that it's substituted.
So there's a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. So then, someone has a, okay, that's...
Madam Chair.
Counselor Benton.
Madam President, I move floor amendment number one to the bill. This is really just kind of a backstop because the county hasn't met to hear their version of this yet. We have been coordinating with the county, and we, no reason to expect that it would not be approving it, to the contrary, but this is just kind of some backstop language just in, for some reason, unforeseen event, that the county cannot pass a bill. This clarifies what's to be done.
Thank you.
So I move floor amendment number one.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second for floor amendment number one. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Back on the bill. So who are we going to? Counselor Benton?
Madam President, yes, thank you. Floor amendment number two has to do with a recent letter signed by fifty-five members of Congress having to do with funding for the Census Bureau offices, especially in areas that have historically been undercounted. We have, the reason this census is so important to us in Albuquerque are numerous. We have a history of an undercount, contrary to popular thought of some folks, I guess. The count is really for every citizen and every person, more importantly, who lives in the state. And formulas are created by the federal government to fund states like New Mexico and cities like Albuquerque based on, and regions like ours, based on the census results. So it's very important that we have a complete count. And this year is going to be somewhat different for the census because they're doing more, they're taking an approach of using more digital response and so forth. That's not to say they're not going to go and try to track down everyone who does not respond by some digital means, but it's going to be some extra important work for them. And so this really just discusses that and refers to the letter by members of Congress, including our own representative in Congress, Congresswoman Holland, and inserts some language with regard to that existing deficit of number of offices, and also talks about that we would support advocacy, that type of advocacy with the Census Bureau to make sure that our offices are adequately staffed. So I'll move floor amendment number two.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for floor amendment number two. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Counselor Benton?
Those are both of our amendments, so...
Okay, so we're done?
I just, I'll just do my own closing, but I'm sure the other cosponsors might want to say something about this.
Excuse me, Counselor Benton. We actually have two people signed up to speak before we go to closing.
Okay, that's fine. Sure.
So, Mr. Tad Nemenski and Veronica Azarate? Oh.
My name is Tad Nemenski. And listening, Counsel Benton, very interesting. Well, of course, he wants to count that all illegal people living here, besides they already get education, et cetera, et cetera. And who's going to pay for it? Oh, that's the money from federal government right here. No, that's just bring that money to the city. Well, I'm sorry, that's wrong. That's only count legal citizen, all illegal are illegal residents. If you sponsoring them, you committing crime on behalf of them in the eyes of United States Immigration Office. Then, that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Just to respond, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Benton?
Just to respond and clarify, this is according to federal law and our longstanding practice that every person is counted who is present in the country who requires services. So it has nothing to do with our local preference of what we would like to do or what someone would want to do or not. Excuse me, sir. Just to make that very clear.
Thank you. Our final speaker, Veronica.
Good evening, Madam President, Peña, members of the council. My name is Veronica Azarate. I am the partnership specialist with the Census Bureau, working here in New Mexico. And I just want to reiterate what Counselor Benton was mentioning. Everything here is the Constitution of the United States mandates that we count everyone living in the country. It is based on population count how the federal government distributes over six hundred and seventy-five billion dollars. Each state receives their fair share of that money based on the population. So it is very, very important that we do outreach efforts through the Complete Count Committee, education to everyone here in the city of Albuquerque and Bernaleo County, because if we fail to count one person, that translates to about three thousand dollars per person that we miss here in New Mexico. A family of four, that would be twelve thousand dollars. You do the math if we start missing a certain percentage of our population. So there's going to be a mass media campaign taking place at the national level where we're going to be informing the residents about the importance of participation, why does it matter to fill that questionnaire? But in addition to that, we need to make sure that we are reaching the, what we call the hard-to-count communities, whether it's because lack of understanding, or language barriers, or problems with technology. As Counselor Benton mentioned, there's going to be, this is going to be the first census that we encourage people to fill their questionnaire online, and that's going to be very practical for the majority of us, but there's that challenge of, you know, those who don't have access to Wi-Fi, or, and they need to be very well informed. So thank you to the members of the council that have been supportive of this effort, to the policy analysts, the city staff and everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So back to Counselor Benton to close.
Again, Madam Chair, if the cosponsors would like to close, I pretty much made my case. I do think this is really important to us as a community, as a state, that we get a complete count. I was surprised when, at the Transportation Board, when I saw what a difference it makes, what a difference, a very small difference, in fact, in the last census made. We were just a little bit under a benchmark of population count that would have resulted in a lot more money for public transit and highways. So, I mean, I could make a pitch for everybody to get busy making babies in the next generation. But regardless of that, it's very important that we count everyone who's here in the state.
Thank you, Counselor Benton. Counselor Sanchez to close.
Thank you, Madam President. I am proud and honored to be sponsoring this legislation. I think it is vitally important and critical to the city, county and the state. And I'm very pleased that the county is wanting to partner with Albuquerque. As the previous speaker mentioned, anytime there's an undercount, it's an injustice to New Mexico, and it has cost in the past millions of dollars for an undercount. So I think we need to work very closely with all the different entities of government to make sure that every individual is counted, because the loss comes to the citizens and taxpayers of this community, because for the money that, you know, we're not getting from the federal government, in many cases, we as a city or a county are having to make up those resources, and it's very difficult to do without raising taxes. But I think this is important, that we continue to work and work in collaboration with the U.S. Census Bureau. It is important. But this really is a critical count coming up in 2020, and we all need to work together, whether it's through community neighborhood associations, just different organizations. We need to make sure every individual is counted here in New Mexico. We need to make sure every individual is counted here in New Mexico.
Thank you, Counselor Sanchez. Counselor Borrego to close.
Thank you, Madam President. I had the privilege of working on the 2010 census as a city planner. So I see how important this is. And I think that it's so important in terms of the federal financial allocation that is receiving our fair share. And so the importance cannot be exaggerated. I mean, it is something that is, goes beyond our, you know, our ability. But I think that we will do our best. And I've, I've talked to the county, Counselor O'Malley and others who are very supportive of this, the administration, and I thank them for, for their support as well, because I know that they're the ones that are going to be out there doing the, the best work that they can do to count every individual. The Census Bureau, thank you for, for the work that you've done supporting us in, in writing this resolution. I would just also mention that the fair share that goes to the infrastructure, transportation, seniors, our schools, I mean, it's, it's a huge, huge undertaking. But I know that we will do, you know, every, we will provide every effort to ensure that everyone is counted with the, the help of our hospitals, our nonprofits, our neighborhood associations, outreach at every, every level possible. So I urge your support.
Thank you, Counselor. I actually want to close by saying that, you know, I'm happy to support this resolution. And I too, you know, we really have to do our due diligence and make sure that we, that everyone is counted. So with that, there is a motion in second for a due pass as substituted R 117. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Next item is D, Counselor Benton, R 118.
Thank you, Madam President. R 118 is declaring the intent of the city of Albuquerque to issue metropolitan redevelopment bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $26,400,000 in connection with the acquisition, construction, and equipping of the Marriott Spring Hill Suites project. I move a due pass.
There's a motion in second for a due pass of R 118. We have one speaker, Ms. Sue Flint.
Thank you again. I oppose these redevelopment bonds, obviously. I am not for any of them that goes to Kurt Browning and Titan. I would ask you to ask yourself, did the Albuquerque Development Commissioners proceed in the manner that they are supposed to? There are commissioners that did not excuse themselves where they have a conflict of interest. We have John McConire, whose brother is Mike McConire, who is with Moestis as a partner. Or as, Moestis is his representative agent over in the South Valley. We have Jim Strozier, who is an agent for Kurt Browning, and you gave him the redevelopment bonds over at Coronado Redevelopment Plan at the I-25 Studios. You know, these people created a blighted area. Presbyterian is now involved, and this only happened after you gave them the money on the west side, upper lower petrocliffs. When you look at them and they go in and they're asking you for redevelopment bonds, you say that it's in the public's interest. I don't find it's in the public interest. These are people who are going to use a tax shelter by probably partnering with Ronald McDonald, and they use it as a nonprofit, so they don't pay. They don't pay any, you pay them incentives and tax abatements, so our GRT doesn't go anywhere. You know, I'm looking at all this redevelopment, I'm trying to see where this is in public interest. These committees, commissions, and boards have conflict of interest. The Berry administration, as well as this Keller administration, is refusing to look at the policies, regulations that they are under, and they are under it. They're protected under the city charter if they do not violate the defense. And these people have violated it. And as I say always, I'll come after them. Thank you again.
Thank you. Or, that was the final speaker. Are there any questions or comments from this council? Counselor Sanchez?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a couple of questions for staff. I know that we will be giving the developers a seven-year, or seven-year abatement, but you know what we are collecting today in property taxes at that location and at that site?
Yes, Madam President, Counselor Sanchez. The information provided to us states that they are currently collecting about $456,000 in property tax for that property currently. The seven-year tax abatement period would be a total of a little over $3.1 million.
Because reading through this summary, I thought we would be collecting $456,381 after the seven years was completed.
Yes, Madam Chair, Counselor Sanchez, you're right. Sorry, I read that incorrectly. I actually don't know how much property tax is being collected. Perhaps the developer or our bond counsel will know that.
Thank you.
Karen Iverson, Metropolitan Redevelopment Manager. We currently collect, the total property taxes for this property is $3,400.
I think this is a great addition to that area. I want to thank Counselor Benton for sponsoring this legislation. The money that we will be collecting in taxes after the seven years is going to be much greater than the $3,000 we are getting today. And I also believe, and I'm very pleased to see, that Ronald McDonald House wants to put one of the floors where families can stay there directly across the street from Presbyterian Hospital, or actually access to UNMH, which I think will be a big benefit to those individuals that are dealing with the crisis situation with, with their children and in a crisis position and in a critical condition in many cases. So thank you for your work.
Thank you. Counselor Benton, we just want, okay, Counselor Borrego.
Karen, did you leave?
She's right there.
Could you come forward for a second, please? The state metropolitan redevelopment code allows for areas to be designated as redevelopment areas. And there are certain criteria that projects have to go through in order to be designated. And I believe the Development Commission is the governing body that recommends to the council that, in fact, these projects have met that criteria. So could you just kind of go through a little bit of that process for me, please?
Yes, Madam President, Counselor Borrego. The Sycamore Redevelopment Plan was adopted in 1981. And since that time, there really has not been a significant amount of redevelopment in that district. To create the redevelopment area, an analysis is done that looks at vacancy, it looks at crime, it looks at a variety of statistics that determine that the area is blighted. On a project-specific basis, the Albuquerque Development Commission, at their October meeting, found that this project met the criteria of the redevelopment plan, which was to improve the mixed-use character, to improve bike and pedestrian connections with the skybridge, and to prevent neighborhood decline through private investment. This project is really transforming what was a substandard area of town. It is part of a master development that, that Titan has removed over 30 substandard structures, and we now see the vacant parcel that is there. This is one phase of a mixed-use hub that will have 300 residential units, a food court, a hotel, and retail and restaurant component. It is going to strengthen our city core and enliven the Central Avenue and spur economic development and growth along Central Avenue in the same way that the old Albuquerque High Development has done. This project also meets the administration's goals, economic development goals of implementing place-based strategies and investing in our center-city locations. The project will also increase safety by attracting visitors and providing eyes on the street. It is estimated that the project will bring 123 construction jobs and 50 full-time equivalent jobs.
So part of that analysis is to look at the future impact, economic impact of, to the area and to the city. Is that not correct?
Yes, in terms of the property tax. And then we also believe that this project will result as, will be a catalytic project and result in future investment and redevelopment in the area.
Okay, and I would just point out some projects that have been through this similar process, such as the theater block at First and Central, which has stimulated the downtown, I mean, leaps and bounds. Unser and Central, which is underway, International Market. I mean, there's, there's numerous projects that were designated redevelopment areas that have undergone the same type of process, and some with the, the tax abatement, some without the tax abatement, possibly. But I think the economic, the, the, the economic impact that will, it will have in this particular area that has been blighted for many years will probably overshadow, you know, eventually. So I think that, I just wanted to point that out. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Madam President, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor Benton.
If there's no one else?
Counsel, Counselor Harris, sorry.
Yes, I, I got some people complaining on email that we're giving tax breaks to a hotel and that why can't other people get tax breaks? And so I just wanted to explain that the metropolitan redevelopment bonds, one of the criteria is that we only do this if it's something that would not happen without these incentives. People don't build Ronald McDonald Houses for profit. People don't build sky bridges for profit. The, the sky bridge is to enable sick people to navigate central. So this is something that improves our city. It's not something that is just a giveaway to a corporation. So I just wanted to be very clear about that, that this is not only something that benefits the city of Albuquerque. Yes, it does benefit the, the corporation, but it's, it is for a particular purpose that, to incentivize something that wouldn't happen without the public-private partnership. So I want to thank the counselor and the proponents of this project for bringing it forward.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Benton?
Thank you, Madam President. And, and, yeah, it was stated, as was stated, or I hope this was stated, but also to underscore what Counselor Harris was just describing, the city is not on the hook for the repayment of these bonds. Strictly, the developer is responsible for the repayment of the bonds. So, so the, the city is, is in a way lending its binding authority to the developer for, so that the project can, can be constructed. And then, as was described, with a, with a present tax of, in the $3,000 range and a future tax in $456,000 range, after that seven-year period of tax forgiveness, property tax forgiveness, the city will be well in the black. I also want to thank the developer for having worked so closely with the neighborhoods. The overall development project, which Ms. Iverson described, which includes housing and, and other, other aspects of the project, as well as just this hotel, were, were very carefully discussed with the Sycamore and Spruce Park and Silver Hill neighborhoods. And these are neighborhoods that have been waiting since 1981, perhaps, for something to come of these, this redevelopment area. And, and it is happening, but it, it hasn't happened without their full information and input as to how it works. So I want to commend the developer Titan for, for having done that. And, yeah, we're looking forward to a lot more vitality in the immediate area. It, it, it's close to the UNM Commercial District as well, and the Edo Commercial District as well. So there should be spinoffs from these hotel rooms and then in the future residents, new residents in the area. So I urge your support.
Thank you, Counselor Benton, kudos. There is a motion in second for approval of one, R 118. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. We are on our last item this evening. Counselor Borrego, R 123.
Thank you. Urging the New Mexico Legislature to provide funding for all schools that wish to implement a community schools framework model, and encouraging a position for a community schools coordinator be created, urging the New Mexico State Legislature to adopt proposed amendments to the New Mexico Community Schools Act. During the 2019 legislative session, I move a due pass, and there is an individual from Community Schools, ABC, that's present that, if you'd like to come forward.
Second.
There's a motion? There's a motion in the second for a due pass of R 123. And did you have a specific question or?
Well, if any of the counselors have questions?
Any questions? No? Counselor Gibson?
Not a question, just a couple of comments. Thank you to the sponsor for, for carrying this. I was involved with the ABC Community Schools for the first five years I was on council and found it extremely rewarding. We do have at least one, two. I only got one eye fixed, I can only see through one eye. But folks who are coordinators or otherwise involved with ABC Community Schools, and really, the juice is getting coordinators into schools. So I, I thank you for putting this up. Very happy to support this. And I hope that, I hope that we can get more help through the state legislature so that that can happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Borrego to close.
Thank you, Counselor Gibson. I just wanted to mention that I, I, I know that their, the sponsors of this bill are in Santa Fe as we speak, talking with their legislators. And I think that this would be tremendous help and a tremendous boost to communities, especially communities that have sometimes a lower economic level. And I think that need, the need is for more family involvement in this model. While it's not mandatory, it provides another tool to APS that allows for sort of more outreach to, to students and their families. So I urge your support.
There's a motion in second for R 123. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. We are, we actually have to go back to our approvals and under approvals. We are back on item A, OC 20, selection of Inspector General. I make a motion to take OC 20 off the table. There's a motion in second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. So the results have been tallied, and we'll now move confirmation of the selected individual. I move confirmation of Kenneth Bramlett. There's a motion in second for Kenneth Bramlett. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Thank you for everyone who applied, I really appreciate it. Congratulations to Mr. Bramlett. So with that, there be no further business. This council meeting is adjourned.